Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening and welcome to our August, I wish it was August. Wish it was August and this was all over. Our May 15 public works session. Can we please face the flag and cite collective allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all call trustee Liking, trustee Candelaria, trustee Mamala, trustee Miller. Please have the record re-flocked. We have all five trustees and the superintendent of schools and attendants to see. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, President White, trustees. When I accepted the position about a month ago, I had been thinking about this night. And I think it's tough for all of us to talk about things like school closings and talk about reducing staff because in our hearts, you know, I'm an educator and I believe that students, especially our students in Hammond, deserve the same opportunities as students anywhere else in the state and the country. And when we're faced with difficult conversations like this, it's hard to say the students come out on top. It's just hard to say that, it really is. But here we are, finances are a reality. And the plan that I will be recommending to the board, which they will not be, for anyone who doesn't know, will not be voting on this tonight. This would be for consideration at the next board meeting on the 21st, Tuesday, the 21st. But as a presentation in the public, we do have, just like last night, we have a comment box out. And the idea behind that is since there's not public comment tonight, and you could write down any questions or concerns after you hear the presentation that are unanswered, and we will create a FAQ on the website to address those questions and concerns. The presentation from last night, I want to give a lot of credit to Matt and the audience there for really giving an incredibly detailed examination of the school finances for Hammond for the past five years. I think this is the third time or fourth time I heard the presentation. Every time I learned a little bit more. We're going to have this presentation and this presentation, the actual PowerPoints posted on the website as well. I know the feed from last night was posted last night and the feed from this will be posted. And it will be available for the public to consume. That said, I think I'd better just go ahead and get started. So, let's begin. As was mentioned last night, tonight's conversation, I know there's a larger conversation that has to happen about what is the long-term fiscal plan for School City of Hammond. But tonight's conversation is going to be, what do we need to do between now and the start of school, essentially? What do we have to do between now and the start of school? And really, between now and July 1st, we have to make a lot of decisions. So we're in the right spot for this year. Summary, because I know not everybody was here last night, may not have had time to listen to the entire presentation, but I would encourage you, if this is new information to you, to please watch the presentation from last night in its entirety, because you'll get a breakdown of where all these numbers come from and why we're in the situation that we're in. And essentially, we have a deficit in 2020, $5 million. Due to the circuit breaker, we did qualify for protected taxing labor, which increased our burden only another $900,000 instead of what we initially had thought in months past, a full 8.4 million. Losses due to student enrollment, we estimate at 1.7 million. And the fact that the funds in the GeoBond will run out at the end of the year means that we have employees in that fund that we will have to fund through operations, so we can no longer fund through the GeoBond. So that's where we get to the $10.2 million here. I want to review just quickly the enrollment trends just the last year. I know this is not new information for many of you, but we did lose 545 students in the fall of May 19. The state has a day they call ADM, the Average Daily Membership, where they base your funding on the number of students who are enrolled. Not the number of students who show up that day, but the number of students enrolled at your school. And the state support, which we saw yesterday, makes up about 90% of our overall funding for School City of Hammond, is based entirely upon student count. How many students we have on ADM is the entire amount of 90% of our funding. So when we go down, 545 students in one, from the '17, '18 to the '18, '19 ADM, we lost $3.6 million in one year. The challenging part for schools is ADM doesn't come in until the middle of September. And if you haven't predicted a loss like that, you're probably staffed for those 545 students to show up at your schools. You can't let go of teachers in September. You can't wide-size your corporation in September. So we had to essentially take that $3.6 million loss on the head. And based upon the spring count, we lower down an additional 122 students above that 545 students. Now, currently this year, the spring count doesn't affect our money. But moving forward, as we learned last night, that will be part of the funding formula moving forward. So, conceptually though, if we don't do anything about it, we're going to continue to suffer some of these losses. And the reason I point out here, the 370 of the 545 are elementary students, that's significant. And I have known this, someone's our elementary director here, and she verified these numbers with me, that traditional losses were more seen at the secondary level. But this 545 loss, we saw a large proportion at the elementary level. 370 of the 545 students were elementary. All right. Okay, so, how do we make up that $10.2 million? One area we can do is we can try to increase the number of students who come into Hammond schools. And what I'm going to share is the basis of Dr. Watkins' team, his presentation, that was our starting point. And a lot of the recommendations you're going to hear tonight are the same recommendations that the board and the public heard in the past, because they were the right recommendations, honestly. They are, they, the orthological conclusion when you study our finances. But for revenue generation, 90% of our revenue comes from the state. And it's only based on how many kids show up at your school on ADM day. So how do we increase the number of students substantially? There's things we're going to do. Like I said, I've been in the job 30 days, there's some big picture things like PR and marketing and things. But we can't count on all those right now immediately having effects. So we could have a return to open enrollment. Open enrollment, again, for those who are familiar, is where we allow students who reside out of Hammond to attend Hammond schools. And the money that the state gives per student comes to Hammond. So money, where approximately 10 students can pay for a teacher, we're getting additional money and it helps offset many of our other expenses. So what we have here next year, our projected amount per pupil is going to be $6,891. If we were able to attract 100 students from outside districts back into Hammond, that's simply multiplying 6, 8, 9, 1 by 100, easy math. Our goal would be to double that number and attract 200 students into Hammond, 1.378 million. But that's just, I put both numbers up there because it's hard to predict. It's hard to say, sitting here right now, exactly how many students would be coming into the school district. But I wanted just to see what the impact would be.
Mr. Moore, I have a question about the open enrollment. Because in the past, there were a few schools who took the majority of the open enrollment. And from what I understand, what we can do is cap the class sizes. And once that school has, say the number's 30, 32, however many children in the classroom, once they have hit that number, then the next student would have to go to another school that has capacity. Is that true?
Yes, but it can't, it really has to be a consistent cap based upon the data that you come in. This is the size of the school, this is how many we can accommodate. But yes, if we hit that cap, we're not going past it.
What's the cap?
It's going to be different for every single school, what their, what their physical capacity is.
What their room capacity is.
Yeah, what their room capacity is.
I've been trying to get that information for a minute. Some of them vary at school by school. Well, we've seen that information far into the 21st.
Yes, yeah, I think we can get.
I think we have a capacity report that came out. We just need to make sure that, that the new board members have it. Because I know that each school did a capacity report, you know? And that was one of the concerns in some of the neighborhoods and some of the areas was that, you know, there was an influx just at one or two schools. Versus allowing these students to go across the district. Will they go where they want to go? Or, oh, what's the, what's, I don't understand, explain that to me.
I think what she's trying to say is that geography plays a big part of where students apply to go to school. So if you look at the neighboring, the neighboring communities, for example, Irving is close to East Chicago. So you're going to have more East Chicago kids coming into Irving. Where the Hesfield community is close to Gary, you may have more Gary kids applying for Hesfield as opposed to maybe Gavin or Hammond High, because they'd have to drive farther to get to those, get to those schools.
But if they choose to go in other schools, they can do that as well.
They could, they could choose to go to one of the other schools.
Well, but I, what we saw in the past, when we had open enrollment, is I think Scott, Morton, and Irving got a bigger influx because there was not caps put on at each school. So they just kept taking kids, which kind of made it a little bit over capacity. So, for instance, for instance, if, you know, you had 10 kids come in and you only had room for five, the other five you'd have to say, well, you're going to have to go to this school or this school because. But that didn't happen, is that what you're telling me? No, that did not happen. Who monitors that? That would have been the administrative staff.
Well, Student Services is going to process.
Right. Well, we have some work to do in that area if we're considering this proposal. That's why I asked the question.
Madam President, that it would be based on whatever policies that, that we decided to set up as related to open enrollment? There's no regulations from the state or whatnot? It wouldn't be what, what we decided and how we set those parameters, is that correct?
Well, do we now tell you to set those kind of policies between now and 21st? I don't believe it's a policy, it's a capacity.
We have the capacity information. I've seen it before, I apologize for not having it ready tonight. But I have seen building capacity information before, so it should just be a matter of sending it to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The other area that we could consider is, and this one has been presented to the board and the public before too, is the virtual school. The report we received from the state indicates that we have approximately 300-plus students who reside in Hammond, but are being homeschooled essentially. They're attending a virtual school instead of one of our schools. One of the benefits we could offer students, of course, is we have great extracurricular programs here in Hammond. And if they chose to enroll in a Hammond virtual school, we would be able to offer them our extracurricular suite. The state just this year has put a couple caps on, on virtual schools as far as funding. We now only get, I believe, 85% instead of full ADM. But it's still, even after we pay our cost, the cost to run the program, we would profit an additional $400,000 by that. The challenge, just being transparent with that, is we don't have their names. The state won't give us, oh, it's this kid at this address and this kid at this address is being homeschooled. So we would have to do a mass marketing effort, which the company we talked to before, Adventum, would be part of that, as part of the package, is to help us sell and market that, that program.
Did this 100 students, the presentation that we received maybe about a month ago about the students who are in hockey and travel and, and those students that are looking for virtual schools, that doesn't include those students, does it?
It does not. Unfortunately, they, they went with a different school, so.
But there are other programs out there that we could market for students, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're advertising for that?
We, we.
So we'd be competitive? Because there was only one, one vendor that came before, is that correct?
Yes, there was only one vendor who came.
So we're going to have to advertise for that?
It's, it's not grant money, we don't have to advertise for it, that we'd be paying for out of it. There's not a requirement to advertise for it, as far as I understand it. All right, so those are really, when, again, 90% of your funding comes from how many students show up, those are the main options for getting more students in your building. So, if you add, if we hit our goal with that, if we add 200 students and 100 students, again, our goal is 10.2 million that we have to hit. This would only represent 1.7 million, 1.78 million. So it's a piece, it's almost 20% of the piece. All right. Let's move on to some cost reductions. All right. So the first one that the administration will recommend to the board is to shutter Miller School. This would have us move our Head Start classrooms to one elementary. Additional program staff there, as it says, would be redistributed to other Head Start locations. And our special entry schools would be split between Edison and Almanon. The cost savings, there's two of them, I'll explain them both. The operational cost, which is everything it costs to run the building, including support personnel, would save us about $226,000 a year. Capital projects savings, this is money that we would have to invest into the school to essentially bring it up to date. It's money we wouldn't have to spend essentially on these buildings. People ask that question, well, if you close these buildings, it means you don't have to spend to repair them. Yes, that's true. That's what the lower number is. It doesn't help us with our operations, it doesn't lower that 10.2 million at all. But it is the savings when we look at where we have to spend the money across the district. Right. Members, any questions about Miller? Okay, Columbia. 253 students in Columbia would be moved to Irving. The operational cost savings is estimated at $363,000. Capital project savings of $714. Latvia, 385 students would be moved, from Latvia would be moved to Maywood. A portion, because they live closer to Irving, 40 of them, we estimate, would actually go to Irving instead of Maywood. And 30 Maywood students who live closer to Wallace would move to Wallace. I have a summary table following this slide of what that, what makes the enrollments look like. So the cost savings for Latvia would be, 600, estimated 693,000. Capital project savings would be 1.216 million. Trustees, questions? Let me show you the, okay, I want to clarify this. I've worked with Mr. Butler. You have it here, it's going to be there. We will be providing transportation for Columbia, Latvia students. It works out very well on our routes, that when they're coming down from Clark, that they can pick up these students and bring them to the new school at very minimal cost. Mr. Butler estimates at nearly no cost to the district. I, I asked him for an estimate and he said it's nearly no cost. That's, that's the best I have. But this is, regardless of whether they live within 1.5 miles or not, we are busing these kids, we want to provide this service. And the district has been faithful, we bused Riley kids. How long ago did we close Riley? We still bused Riley kids. So this is something that we are publicly committing to.
Trustee Miller?
I'm Superintendent.
That's just.
I just want to, I just want to share and put clarification because trustee White and I did have a conversation with some of the Latvian teachers. And they did say that they are fine with the move. So if there's any Latvian teachers here that would like to verify what I'm saying.
She's correct.
That they are fine with the move.
We, we, we're just, we don't want to be told at the last minute.
So I just, you know, wanted to clarify that.
She said she just doesn't want it to be in the last minute.
Can you speak into your mic?
Okay. So the slide that I have here would be the projected enrollments and the current enrollments. So Irving would go from 388 to current enrollment up to 688. We verified their capacity is 800. Maywood would go from 370 to 725, to 775 capacity. And those 30 students from Maywood who would, who would go to Wallace would increase the number from 288 to 318 with a 420 capacity. So that's, that's, yes, they're bigger schools. Yes.
Trustee White. Trustee Liking. Regarding Maywood, we had some questions regarding renovations, the money that would be used for the referendum and considering their, have you had a chance to look into it, Mr. Miller? Because there's quite a bit, I mean, you're talking about health and safety. And we're putting additional children in there. According to the building assessment that I've read, it requires quite a bit more work as opposed to just the pump that is scheduled to be put in. Have you looked into that, sir?
I have not, to be honest. The majority of my time has been getting ready for yesterday and today. So I did give you my word at the last school meeting that I would sit down with Mr. Burgraff and would reevaluate Maywood, and we intend to do that.
So you'll get that to us before we have to vote on this, on the 21st?
I will make it a priority to do so.
Thank you.
All right. So let's, oh, that didn't turn out nice on the formatting. It looked right on my screen. So here's a summary of where we have, just what we've talked about. So, the operational savings, if you add up Miller, Columbia, Latvia, total operational savings of 1.282 million. The capital project savings, again, that number at the bottom, that doesn't affect our operational loss, but that is the money we would not have to spend to continue to repair those buildings. So the top number of the 1.282 million is the more important one. So, let's, let's look at where we're at. So our target to lower expenses is 10.2 million. Through, if we hit our goals with 200 in open enrollment and 100 in a virtual school, that would be, excuse me, 1.783 million off of that. If we do the consolidation, that 1.282 million, that was that same number right there, the total operational savings, minus 1.282 million. And we're still short 7.134 million dollars with closing three schools and open enrollment and a virtual school. So, we also saw yesterday, and this is the part that really hurts, but we saw yesterday that 89% of our expenditures in School City of Hammond are personnel, are staff. And we're still short 7.134 million dollars. So, how do we right-size School City of Hammond staffing? And there are some things that I can't say here because it involves personnel. I can do some big picture stuff, but that's, I will not be able to publicly share like this person or that person or this job or that job, that will not be happening.
For the board, no?
In executive session, yes. So, how many positions does, just the closing of the three schools, Miller, Columbia, Latvia, that reduces 17 non-teaching positions? So if you add up the custodial, clerical, admin of those three schools, the support staff and admin, that only gets us 17 non-teaching positions. And I am going to be recommending that we need to reduce an additional 130 to 150 positions in School City of Hammond to close that 7.134 million dollar gap. I've got some additional information about that. Of course, we will try to use attrition whenever possible. Whenever we have somebody retire or resign, yes, of course, we're going to try to fill positions that way. Let's take a look at current School City of Hammond vacancies. This is current as of today. But this is very deceptive, but I just want, I want you to see it. And I hope someone who just sees the PowerPoint, they would have, you know, they'd watch this stream. But if you just add up the total number of vacancies in School City of Hammond right now, we have 141. But many of these are ones that we absolutely have to fill. Like administrative, we need a new CFO. We need a new CFO here. We need a new Human Resources Director. I'm currently still the CT Director and I'm the Superintendent. We're going to need a new CT Director for Hammond. So some of these positions we have to fill. Now food, let's take food service too, there's 19 by food service. Now, that's very helpful for when we close a building, because that means food service people can still go from their old building to one of these vacancies. But it's not helpful in reducing the cost, because food service doesn't come out of the operational expense. So it doesn't lower, having those 19 vacancies in food service helps the people out who have to transfer, but it doesn't lower any of our costs in the district. From where we have a deficit, I should say. It doesn't lower where we have a deficit. So, in the teaching positions where we have current vacancies, we have 23 in secondary and we have 10 in elementary. But I brought up earlier, if you recall, that like based upon the enrollment trend, we lost 370 out of 545 students on elementary. The proportion of positions are going to be greater in elementary to right-size the school corporation. And we're not talking going past the limits that the board has previously approved in the elementary classrooms, which is making sure that across the district, we're getting our money's worth for the number of students who are in a classroom. And trying to be equitable about. And trying to be equitable about that, teachers have told me that's a concern of theirs, that there are elementary classrooms that have X amount of students, and there's elementary classrooms that have other amounts of students, and we want that to be as fair as possible across the district. All right, so this is a slide actually from last night, Mr. Reese prepared, but I want to refer to it, but I just wanted to show you the origin of what my next slide is going to be. So this was his slide toward the end of his presentation where he wrote down, where do we spend our money? Where do we spend our money in School City of Hammond? So, I'm gonna point your attention to the numbers that are in bold, that are the percents. So fifty-three point seven one percent of our money goes to certified salaries and benefits. Twenty-seven point three-two is for our non-certified salaries and benefits, all our support staff, all those additional people who are non-certified staff. Administrators make up seven point zero nine percent of our expenses, and then the number at the bottom, everything else, NIPSCO bill, all of that comes out of other expenses, which is just under twelve percent. So, the district administration came together and we proposed a plan. And this is where unfortunately, like I said, I can't go into a lot of detail because of contracts and negotiations. But one of the sentiments that was expressed last night, and I agree with, I said, I actually said I agree that there should be equity in cuts. Is, that the cuts we've made are actually very close to the percentage of, that they, those employee groups make up in School City of Hammond. So, the, the plan that we will pre-probe be proposing in cuts, which reduces certified staff by five point six-two, that's a fifty-four percent reduction, it's almost exactly the same amount of percent that they make up in the budget. Classified is a little bit high, administration is within one percent, and the part that's difficult is, like, there's certain expenses. Like our NIPSCO bill with trustee Malo mentioned yesterday was around three point five million a year, it's a little, it's almost like three point eight million a year. That's, we have to deal with those, so it's difficult to cut other expenses. But through our reduction enforced plan, we're looking at saving the district ten point four five six million dollars. That's where we're at. So moving forward, what are the, what would be the next steps in this process? So the school board's gonna consider this plan, I do have an opportunity to be with them in executive session on Monday where I can give them more specifics of, of all the things I can't say in public, I can give them the specifics. So you know that your elected representatives understand fully what the implications are. And then I will be recommending that they take a vote on this on, on the twenty-first at the school board meeting. As I mentioned when we began the presentation, we will start at FAQ, because I'm not gonna be able to predict every question that anyone has, and, and please take advantage of our question box there. If the consolidation is approved, we are ready to let affected parents know immediately which school their, their child will be attending next year. We can, we have that information at the ready. So if it's approved by the school board, the same week, we'll be able to let parents and those communities know, this is where your child will attend next year. So we're ready for that. And then, the district administration, again, once it's approved by the board, will begin having parent forums and reaching out to the affected school communities at each of the buildings, pending board approval. And that, that brings us to the end of the presentation. Questions from trustees?
On someone new, trustee Blake. So based on this report, there would be no cut to the administration?
No, the administration will, will be taking a six point six percent cut, six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars out of the administration will be coming out.
And regarding this virtual school program, I attended a legislative forum, our representatives were here, and this is, they considered this a form of charter school, and therefore they do not support it. So, I would need more information on this to, to, to make me consider supporting this part of the revenue generation. And, because I even read an article regarding virtual school program. You have, the students have to be extremely self-motivated, and some cases, state spent up to sixty-eight million dollars toward this program. And there was no monitoring, and, and a great percentage of these children never received a diploma. So, if we're gonna go this route, we really need to, to, you know, review it in depth.
I, I hear your concerns, I think I've read some of the same articles that talked about Indiana's investment in charter school, or virtual charter, charter schools. This would not be a virtual charter school if we brought it in, there are virtual charter schools. But, for the purpose of this presentation, it's, if we don't, if we don't earn that money, that means it's additional four hundred thousand dollar cut someplace else. That's, that's kind of where we're at with this.
Superintendent Miller, I, I recall the presentation from the company that monitored the virtual, that has the program.
The vendor.
The vendor. And I believe what Mrs. Myrick had said that night is, the virtual school that was going to be recommended to us would have teacher support for those students, which a lot of the other programs don't have. It would give them like a Skype face-to-face, and then those students would also be able to join some of our extracurricular programs. Do we know how many, I know sometimes even our own students that want to finish early will, will pull out and go to a virtual school, and I don't think we've monitored that in the past. You know, if they're in their senior year and they want to graduate in December, you know, sometimes they go to a virtual school, which if we had this, then we could offer it to them. We see more and more students that are getting into other activities, not only athletics, but some are also getting into, you know, I, I saw one article that came out, and they were swimming, and they were traveling all over the place. So they were looking for some corporation to allow them to have that, that teacher contact and attend a, a virtual school. Isn't that, is that what I remember the presentation was?
Yes, you're correct. So we have an, ahead of the district for a while, software called Playto, which is from the same company, which is primarily self-paced from the student. There, it's not, there's not an online teacher that's prompting them and making sure they're on track. The difference between Playto and this program is that there are licensed Indiana teachers that are responsible for the student progress. And if the student drops off, like they quit showing up for the online, they quit responding to emails or phone calls, then they notify the local school, say, hey, when, you know, we need you to try to reach out to this student because he's not responding anymore, she's not responding. So, it should have a level of quality and checks and balances in it, that's a little bit better than just Playto. We, we've tried the Playto thing with the app program, where they were home four days a week and they came in one day a week, and we had those challenges where the kids weren't motivated to continue with the program. But hopefully with a licensed Indiana teacher working with them, we would see better results, and that's what they've told us. They, the, the company has shown that students in this program have really have a high level of success.
Yeah, I believe they brought the data with them that night. Would we still have the Playto program, or would the students in the Playto program be transferred over to this other program? Because it sounds like this program would be more monitored than our current Playto program.
It would actually, the, the current plan in discussing the secondary leadership is, that it would be a hybrid of both. If a student just needs to pick up one class, Playto is the more appropriate solution for them to pick up a class, yes.
Trustee Blake, also you come in that presentation, I asked the question, how would the teachers be paid, would they be paid on the same level? And he basically said, no, so that's certainly not encourage our teachers to participate in that program. So we need to know.
I can provide some clarification on that. I, I did follow up with them about the pricing structure, because I also had concerns of, well, how's a teacher gonna still be a Hammond teacher and then do this program, and what if they're at, you know, the same time? I didn't want there to be a conflict of interest. So, essentially, if they have a whole pool of Indiana teachers, and Hammond teachers, if they were interested in doing part-time virtual teaching at night, it would not be during the same time, they would have no student load during the day. If they wanted to do part-time at night, they would apply to be in the pool, and then the company selects out teachers to, as they have needs, you know, as they sell to more corporations, they need more teachers, they bring the teachers in. There wouldn't be, no one, none, none of the deal would be, they're taking full-time Hammond teachers from their day job to go work for them, that's not part of it. It's simply, they'll provide the day teachers, and then if we have any teachers who want to earn extra money at night by being an employee, not a School City employee, but being an employee of Edmentum, through their pay schedule, it would be additional part-time money for those teachers, if they were selected from Edmentum.
Superintendent Miller?
Yes.
I also remember during the presentation that Lincoln, that it was the students basically did not want to attend their homeschool. And then I asked the question, if the program, the Playto program is still going to be going on at the area career center? Because as I understand, those are students that are having difficulties in the traditional classroom, and that program was actually an alternative for them to obtain their high school diploma. So I'm very concerned with that program, you know, being still kept in place.
So the, the question of what's the appropriate response for School City for an alternative program, is I think that's one that we still need to figure out. You talk to educate, you talk to, I mean, all the trustees have this concern, all the educators in the room have this concern, do we have an alternative option that's viable for kids? From talking to Ms. Parker, Ms. Jankosik, who will receive this app program at the career center that the trustees referring to, bringing them in now, five days a week, four days a week, has been more successful than the four days at home, one day a week. I asked them for some data, they said when the, when the semester concludes, they'll get data that I can present to the board on how effective that program has been. Obviously, it's very effective, we would not, it would be alongside of what we're talking with a virtual school would not replace it.
So we have a parallel?
Yes.
It would kind of be a hybrid, and students who need something more then might go into the.
To the face-to-face, well, who need the more, if they need more supports, we would have them come into school.
Which makes sense, because we have a program that's in place right now, and if it's working for some students, then you want to leave them in that. And then other students would have the ability, or, you know, they could make the decision, their parents could, maybe this virtual school would be better for them.
The other thing that vendor told us is that we can have hybrids, we can have kids who go face-to-face instruction, they show up at the brick and mortar school for maybe a half a day. And then they do certain classes through the virtual school. Sitting in a school for, for a full day, it just isn't for every kid. So if we can sort of help them be successful through a hybrid model, why not?
You know, and I really think that makes sense, because in the past, a school corporation would have to create an alternative school to help students who, who could not sit in a classroom. And now in the age of technology, to have the ability to, you know, have that student come in for a few hours and then do the rest virtual, because it's just not something that works for them. I, I think is better for the corporation and better for the student.
With the, the way the app program is set up, for those who aren't familiar, we have a morning and an afternoon session, so it even allows us to do the kind of hybrids for those kids who, they really struggle getting up and getting to school on time, they can just come to the afternoon session. And then again, with a hybrid model, they can complete other things at night. But, from what Mr. Jankosik, Ms. Parker tell me, the results will be much better, so step in the right direction.
Well, I, I, some of the articles I also read with what some of our Irving students are facing. You know, sometimes they have to get part-time jobs, and sometimes they have to help with family commitments. So having an alternative for them to be able to do this virtual school in the evening or at their convenience, but still get their education. I think it is, would really help for the development of that child versus that child have to drop out of school.
That would, that would absolutely be the goal, yes, that gives the flexibility to students to be able to complete their goals and, and not have to drop out, absolutely.
Trustee White. My, two major concerns with this plan is simply this. Again, we have not gone far enough, considering we're building this brand in high school, how is it gonna impact that? My understanding initially before this was that we had to make a decision before the end of the year, whether it's gonna be a high or middle school, because the Schnitz and, you know, Skilman had to make certain plans. And we're talking about mascots, and names, and home nine yards, and, and the other plans included consolidating high schools. That we only could afford, based on Mr. Boone's report, we only could afford two high schools, and that was even part of the report from the folks from our community that came together, the business and, and, and community people and the laypeople. So, similar, which is, even the consultant, I recall at the meeting when all these folks were working together, he said, how many failing schools do you have? And he said, that's when you began, you do not cut your high achieving schools. And we just pay for consultants, we don't listen to them, we don't take their advice, it seems like we're just going in the direction. So again, we haven't gone far enough, how is this gonna impact the new high school? And there's nothing in this report in terms of how are we gonna keep our kids? That five hundred and thirty-four number students we're using is just not, according to the meeting we went to, it's just was not opening enrollment. We had folks, we had folks that left, over a hundred kids left, and was willing to pay tuition to Munster to leave Hammond. They don't want their children in a failing school. You know, what, what, what plan is in place to keep our kids here, you know, we're trying to bring in new ones, but what are we doing to keep and upgrade our schools, make them academically higher? I mean, we have three failing schools, too many Ds, only four Bs, now our B school has been integrated with another school, so we definitely can lose some points on that. I don't think we've gone far enough, we have, in this plan, we need to know, what are we doing to keep the children here academically? Why do they want to come to Hammond School City, period?
Just a couple of your points. The board and, will absolutely need to make a decision on what the new high school is moving forward this summer, like, that has to happen this summer. It is not a, that decision is not part of the expense reduction, so I chose not to include it in this presentation, because I, I really feel like that's a separate discussion at a separate time that, that people feel pretty passionate about. But that doesn't save us any money, whether we make it a high school, middle school, combine it, which high schools, that, that's not a money-saving item. But it is an item that you're absolutely right, that we have to make a decision on sooner than later. We, we can't wait till next year to make that decision, especially on the new high school.
So if you're saying, I'm gonna hear you're saying, we decide that it will be a high school, we still won't go far enough and say, who is going to?
No, we, we absolutely have to make that decision this summer, for all the reasons you stated, that the architects say that if we wait, that when they told me, we have to have the final decision, and I don't mean just which schools, but like, the actual mascot colors, logo, all of that is by December, at the latest. So we have to make the decision this summer, what schools are gonna go there, and then my recommendation would be, that we start getting the kids together from whatever schools those are, and have them come together to help make the decisions on the logo, on the, on what the colors are gonna be. And have it be a joint decision with both of those student bodies when we get to that point. That would be my strong recommendation for how we decide what the branding information is on the new high school.
So, trustee White, so you're suggesting, whatever school, whatever high school is combined with the new school, that's not a cost saving, if that high school has to close?
It will close, but we can't accelerate the closure of the school, it's not gonna be closed if the new school is open.
Okay.
The decision we have to make is.
But we are gonna make a decision before the year is out?
Before the summer's over.
Before the summer's out, okay, I appreciate that. And your second part, in terms of how are we gonna keep what we got academically?
Absolutely, that's one of the goals, is to improve academic achievement, we do a lot of work, and, and your point is right, we do spend a lot of money to try to do the best we can, but I, I have a great team. But I, I have a great team that we're getting together here in Hammond. I have a lot of faith in the district administration that we have. And, and working together, I do think we're going to be able to get some of these gains we're looking for. But it's not, there's, there's no magic bullet to academic achievement. It's not one single program, it's not one single superintendent, it's not one building administrator. It's all of us working together to solve this problem. And it's just like this budget thing, it's not one thing. It's a lot of little things that add up to success. And that's absolutely what I'm committed to.
So Superintendent Miller, and I know we've. I know we've talked about it and sometimes we, we look at success as what building had a success. And it's really what programs and what leadership they had within that building and taking that and replicating it into other buildings that are struggling. And bringing those staffs together and those children together. Because it's not the building that gets its success, it's actually the leadership and the programs and what we're doing. And I think we talked about that quite a few times that, you know, and you had mentioned it, that when we have success in a certain area, we need to take that and replicate it for, well, five years. Yeah, I think we, we all have, and I think Superintendent Miller, you know, understands that, you know, we need to do that because, like you said, student achievement isn't one program. Because every student is different and all the sessions that we've gone to, when you look at urban kids and the challenges that they're bringing to school with them, you have to use different types of teaching methods, absolutely. So, you know, and, and I think that's well understood, correct?
Absolutely. And there's a balance. I mean, you're talking about best practices. Are we, are we doing best practices in each of our buildings? When we have success, are we taking that success and seeing if it'll apply? And when I say there's a balance, because there's a uniqueness. Our, our, our community, our four high school communities and the theater schools are not all the same. Are there common threads? Are there things that should and will work across every committee, out of every community? Yes. But there's also specialities to each community and things we have to be sensitive about to each community that have to balance that with. But I think that's where we're moving. I know with the leadership team we're talking about is what are the things we really want to invest in district wide? And give it some time to see if it's going to work and bring return, rather than trying to do all sorts of different things at different schools.
I, you know, I agree with that methodology. And, and I think what you spoke about with the hybrid, you know, what we have to decide this summer with the high schools, if, you know, culturally, if we're, we're merging, because we've always had four high schools. You know, if we're merging, you, you have a cultural difference at each school. And I think your recommendation was on the spot that, you know, you bring the students together, you bring the parents together and they work that out because, you know, the school's not going to open until 2021. And so you have that time to do that, but the sooner we do it, the better.
Yes, and we have to make the decisions this fall anyway. So let's get the kids together and let that be the first unifying thing for those kids is that they're coming up with the name and the, the identity essentially for that new school.
Any other questions?
Well, talking about the success of schools, the teachers will be following the students. So the success of the school is not, as we, as you stated, as we stated, it's not the building. It's the people that are the leaders of that school, within that school, that are making that school successful, teachers, so on and so forth.
Let, let me, I, I don't want to promise anything that it's not going to happen. I'm not going to be that, that person. It is our intention to try to get as many kids, as many teachers to follow the kids. Where the part becomes, if we have to do a reduction, there's negotiated rules about who gets to stay and, and who, who doesn't. And so that's the part I can't say that 100% of Lafayette is moving. Because if they have a first year teacher in a spot that's being reduced, that's maybe in the, well, it's going to be first by categories, by needs improvement or ineffective, they may not get to go. So that's a reality that I can't promise anybody right now is which person is going to be going where. And there's a domino effect that happens with a little bit of that as well.
Yeah, thank, thank you for saying that because, you know, that has to be, you know, part of the plan.
How soon with the staff that will have to leave, you know about it?
Well, we can't do anything until the board makes their approval. So once we have board approval on, on Tuesday, then we can begin in earnest, working with our, our labor council and meeting with the representation from each employee group to move forward.
And pardon me, this, this financial plan, we will be looking at this every year then. So we don't have a full multi-conference plan. We're doing it year by year, is that what I'm hearing? So we're going to be at this possible school closing, what schools close, what, from year to year, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we have to do a budget process every year and the state only requires a one year budget process.
But I'm talking our plan, our strategic plan, your strategic plan, you know, a multi-plan that this public can see in anticipation of what's to come. I mean, when we forecast things, we have to, we just have to be more forthright. I mean, especially the three schools that are closing now, it was real good back in 2017. Can you imagine how they felt? And now it's finally coming to fruition. And we need to let people know what we're doing. So that's my whole point in the, in the forecasting.
I would absolutely want to have a long term plan for facilities. The part that is unpredictable is, is the enrollment. I wish we could have more control and we could have better financial pictures. And the other part that's unpredictable is state support as far as how much is the state going to invest? Because we saw from the presentation last night, that we used to receive, was it over $25 million in complexity? Now that's 10 million.
15.
Yeah, it's 15 now.
We lost 10.
We lost 10 million in complexity due to state funding formula changes.
So Superintendent Miller, you know, I think that, you know, we've kind of been at a stalemate here. We need to move forward with a plan. And once we get that plan and start implementing that plan and marketing and trying to get our students back, see how many we get with the virtual school, I think by the, you know, I hate to go as far as December, because we won't know exactly in the fall how many we get. But then we can look at our long range, say a five, five year plan. You know, a 10 year plan is what people used to do, but I think that's unrealistic. You know, three to five year plan, once we see what our actual costs have been cut, what we can put into the bottom line and have that cushion to see what actually happens when we make this. And also when, you know, we meet this summer about what we're going to do with the new high school, I think that gives the administration a better idea of how then to plan for the future.
According to Mr. Reese's report, what was definitely what I heard, he's projecting a loss of 545 for the next two or three years. I mean, that's a loss.
Yeah, he's, he's being conservative.
And that's a lot to be covered, even with the recommendations we have before us in terms of our consolidation. That's a lot to be covered, 545, that's a lot.
Yeah, I, I agree with you totally. You know, I think that, you know, if we move on this and we can get everyone, this is a lot of work to do what's been presented to us tonight. And, you know, Mr. Miller's been here, you know, 30 days. And get it, marketing and get a PR person, because we need to start generating all the good things that are happening in Hammond. And everything that we have to offer a child, you know, that's going to help for the future too. Thank you.
Superintendent Miller?
Yes.
I would just like to acknowledge you for not being afraid to continue the tough conversation with Dr. Watkins and head start. This is going to be for us and I, I know it's really not easy for you and your team. And I just, I just wanted to, to thank you for, for your courage to do that. I also wanted to add that I'm excited about the possibility of a virtual school. And when we talk about marketing to a different group of students, what, what you propose in offering access to extracurriculars and some of those face to face components, I, I've done quite a bit of research in my, my day job, I do distance learning. That's not something a lot of folks offer. And I do think that that's, that's going to make us competitive in, in a market that, that's kind of untapped. And so I, I, I acknowledge you for that as well.
Thank you.
And I know Dr. Watkins was here. Did he leave? Well, I mean, you know, Dr. Watkins had started this project, as we know, a while ago. And as I said, we've, we've kind of been stuck. So, you know, we're at the time now that we need to move, we need to make the tough decisions. And all of his hard work and his dedication, this was part of, you know, what he wanted to do before he left. And I know that you've worked very closely with him, took his plan, and it's, it's almost exactly like, you know, what it was. So we appreciate everything that, that he's done for this district and that he's brought forward for us. So I know he was here, I saw him.
He was here about 15 minutes ago.
Oh, okay.
Trustee White, I have an announcement.
Sure, any other questions for Superintendent Miller? Are, are you done? Okay. Before I ask for adjournment, trustee Blake Kane.
Thank you, trustee White. I would like to make an announcement. Women's March and Rally for Public Education, this coming Sunday, May 19th, we're going to start at 1:00 PM at the Hammond City Hall, that's the corner of Calum and Hammond and Highland. Then we're going to walk over to Hammond High School, starting 1:30. And we're, we're asking, we're talking about advocacy. That's our biggest problem. We need to, the state legislator downstate need to know how we feel about what, what they have done to public education. So come and learn about issues on public education, learn how you can be part of the solution. Please wear your red, we're inviting everybody. Hopefully, I know trustee White can't come in to represent the board, hopefully Mr. Miller, you can stop by and say, give a good welcome. But it's all about advocacy. We can't just sit here and expect this general assembly to do what they need to do. They don't care about us up here, Northwest Indiana. We got a bridge together, work together, PTAs, all of us. Let them hear that we're sick and tired of cutting the funding and making it so hard for our administrators and teachers to do the best job that they know they can do. So please join us this coming Sunday, 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. I also would like to thank Superintendent Miller and his administrative team. I know they've been working on this for months and it's taken a lot of their time, they've put a lot of effort in and, you know, to come up with a plan like this. I thank the audience for coming tonight, listening. We have some tough decisions, but as a community, we can stay together and we can do the right thing for our children. So thank you very much. I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
This means adjourned. Thank you very much.